We're gonna go ahead and get started today. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeasimple of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call, please, Joan.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long. Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Benali.
Cosetta.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here. All right, we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and proceed. First item is the approval of today's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Any questions, first of all?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. I want to take a second to make sure and welcome everybody out this morning, this early morning meeting. We've got some neat stuff, some displays over here. Everybody, please notice that you said it's from Miyamura, Miyamura students. So if you know anybody over there that's presenting with their stuff here, it's pretty exciting to see the work that they've got going on there. I also want to take a second, I don't know if everybody had heard, but I want to recognize the passing of a true friend of our district, Sammy C. from last week. He is probably the biggest Gallup guy that I've ever met in my life, and I've known him since I was in high school. He's a fantastic person, fantastic family, fantastic father, and always, always a friend of the district, always a friend of the district and a big advocate for Gallup. So anyways, if you know anybody associated with the family, pass along your condolences. All right, so the next item on the election here is board officers. What is the pleasure of the board?
I would like to nominate Kevin Mitchell for president.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other nominations? Okay, can we, can we, let's take a vote on that first and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right, next office is Vice President?
I would like to nominate Priscilla Benali for Vice President.
I'll second that as well. Any other nominations for Vice President? Okay, then with that, we'll go ahead and close the nominations and take a vote.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Maybe I could ask our parliamentarian here if I would nominate Mr. Shaw to be the president, but he's already the president. Do we have to vote on that if it's to stay the same? Or secretary, I'm sorry, I misspoke, secretary.
Not on the agenda.
Okay, so it stays the same. Okay, we'll move on to the next item then.
Changes right now.
We're gonna change right now? Okay, let's do it.
Good morning, everybody. First of all, I'd just like to say it's an honor and a pleasure to be nominated and to be your next Gallup McKinney County School Board President. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Priscilla.
She is the head of the nation in Chicago. I'm Chinese, I use it on my case, so I could she years earlier. So the only car I age and I can have a decision to. I just want to say thank you for your nominations and your votes. Chris and Michael, we appreciate all that you've done for the district and what you have instilled into the schools and into our communities. But I think since, and that means I appreciate it a lot, and we thank you for the four years and all your time. I know it's not just once a month that you guys dedicated a lot of your time to the school district, and I hope you come back and see us and sit out and appreciate every, come to the events because we will miss you guys there, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to say congratulations to the both of you and excited for the changes coming to the school district. And I look forward to seeing continued momentum and results. It's exciting the direction we're going in, and I'm really excited to continue to watch, so. Go ahead.
Thank you. We'll continue on with our recognition, JOM Teacher of the Year.
President Mitchell, members of the board, we are excited again this year to have the opportunity to have one of our staff members receive the JOM Teacher of the Year, the Johnson O'Malley Teacher of the Year, I should say. And I want to invite our Director of Cultural Education, Dr. Ofilia Sanchez, and also Board Member, Vice President, Ms. Benali, to present the award. And Board Members, if you would, come to the front, please.
Yeah, none of it, eh, to I can have. I'll tell you, eh, yeah. Let me introduce myself as we're presenting this award. She eh, yeah, Priscilla Benali, and she do. I thought she need to be a student. Kyaani, that's a chey, to buy out the night that she know. But eh, yeah, I stand in shling, though, do I, yes, they're not sure. Are they, eh, you see, she might, she might eh, haystack, they're not gonna. She's a pinion, they're not gonna. I called. Eh, I can have none, get the shnee. This is a prestigious award that I'm so thankful that we got our nominations for Ms. Wilson. I sit on the National Johnson O'Malley Board for the state of New Mexico. So as many of you guys and some of my colleagues here, we wear multiple hats in our communities, and we're not just a board member, we serve on different committees, different entities within our community. And one of the things that I've always been very passionate about has been Johnson O'Malley, which continues to secure our language and our culture within our districts and our state and our nation. So it was an honor to have one of our own being presented at the national level. This is not just a state award, this is a national award. And we, as a board, there's 12 of us that sit on the board, and we all get to select region exemplary programs of the year and exemplary Johnson O'Malley teachers of the year. And this year, the nomination came in, and then as a board, we look at the applications and then we make our selection. And Ms. Wilson was one of the candidates that was, her application was submitted and was awarded. And I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Mrs. Sanchez.
Good morning, yeah, they been eh, she eh, Ofilia Sanchez, and she to behind, she like, not I, but she's changing, look at that she chey, not I, that she know. I'm very honored to be here today and honored to present not only her recognition from JOM, but what a great honor to have her in our district. She, Terriott Wilson has been teaching at Chi Dodge. Oh, Terriott Wilson, I'm sorry, has been teaching at Chi Dodge for over 10 years. She views her teaching as a passion and not a profession. She works very hard to ensure that not only the students are learning their language and culture, but she supports them personally and academically. She views the Dine way of life as a value and includes them in extraordinary and exemplary lesson plans every day with her students. She goes above and beyond. I always tease her and say sometimes she plans too much for her students, but she does a great job to ensure that they're using and understanding the Navajo language every day. And this past year, I took her out of her comfort zone, and she became one of our GMCS HLC teacher mentors in helping and growing our own HLC teachers for the future. And she did an excellent job in mentoring our future HLC teachers here with us. So today, this morning, we honor Terriott Wilson for doing a great job and being one of our HLC teachers who continue to excel every day. Thank you. Yeah.
I would just like to give a big congratulations to Ms. Wilson, and, you know, I thank her very much for all she does for our children and going to this conference this past, well, last weekend in the National Johnson O'Malley and to revisit all the reasons why language and culture is so important to our tribe. And thank you to her family. She had all her family there, and it was good to see that she has all that support. And it's no wonder she's the great woman she is. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Ms. Benali?
Thank you very much. I also want to say thank you to our Language and Culture Program. They did a fabulous job, Ms. Sanchez and her staff, in doing a presentation, and it was wonderfully received, and we got some really good comments on her presentation. They did have a little incident, but, you know, I think that was several vehicles that got broken into and some of their presentation material was destroyed, so I just wanted, but they picked up, they went back, and, you know, they still did an awesome job on their presentation. So I can have, I appreciate that a lot. And, you know, being a board member, you hear about all the comments and you hear about, you know, how our district is doing, our different districts are doing, and it's great to show that we're in, ahead of a lot of different districts in the nation. So I can have, and I do, I know Mrs. Wilson's vehicle was also one that was attacked, or broken into as long, also our district. So I hope the, and I appreciate Ms. Sanchez for helping the family, talking to the hotel people and trying to organize that. But I just wanted to say thank you to all the families that were there, to both of you, Mr. Mitchell, thank you for attending. It is, it is, you give back and you realize what needs to be done and how vital and important it is for our children to really recognize their self-identity. So I can have.
Thank you for that. So next on our agenda is approval of our regular board meeting minutes of October 20th, 2025. Do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October 20th, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw and second by Mr. Mortensen. Can we have a vote?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Next, we'll be moving to our consent agenda items.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve consent agendas, items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I, please.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agendas, the consent agenda by Mr. Mortensen and second by Mr. Shaw. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Reports, notices, and communications. We have all that here.
It's in board docs.
On board docs. And we can go through that as we move along here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Under communication, I would like to request that if we could work out a schedule or a couple of days in the new year to set up a work session with the new board members that are coming in. I think it's vitally important that we review the strategic plan and, you know, just let them meet our staff, maybe a short presentation from the different departments that we have and align, let them get familiar with ourselves and then also with our administration and our programs.
Okay, we have a request from Mrs. Benali for a work session for our incoming school board members. And we will get that set up, thank you. So next, we will be moving into number four, executive session.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session in accordance with 4A. I'm not gonna read the entire. All right, I have to read the entire thing. Test me on my reading skills. 4A, the board will meet in executive pursuant to Section 10-15-1 H7 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss with the school district's attorney the review of all pending or threatened litigation in which the school district is a party and to apply best practices to the continued litigation under the attorney-client privilege in anticipation of and to prevent further litigation. The Board of Education will discuss pursuant to Section 10-15-1 H2 of the Open Meetings Act, the succession plan regarding the selection of the successor to the superintendent, including best practices on the selection and regarding contracting for the successor in anticipation of and to prevent litigation under the attorney-client privilege. No action will be taken and only the items listed will be discussed.
Second.
We have a motion to go into the executive session by Mr. Board Member Mortensen and second by Board Member Shaw. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Eight forty-nine.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we return to regular session and exit executive session. I'll read this long motion for the executive session. The Board will meet an executive pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash one H seven of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the school, district, attorney, the review of all pending or threatened litigation in which the school district is a party and to apply best practices to the continued litigation under the attorney-client privilege in anticipation of and to prevent further litigation. The Board of Education will discuss pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash one H two of the Open Meetings Act, the succession plan regarding the selection of the successor to the superintendent, including best practices on the selection and regarding contracting for the successor in anticipation of and to prevent litigation under the attorney-client privilege. No action was taken and only the items listed above were discussed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Board Member Chris Mortensen to come out of executive session and a second by Board Member Shaw. Role call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Ten fifteen.
Mr. President, may I also make a motion under the new business section that we approved to discuss and approve the selection of a successor to their superintendent, namely Ms. Javana Hanks?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mortensen and second by Mr. Shaw to discuss the selection of successor of superintendent.
May I, excuse me, Mr. President, before we vote, I wanted to just make a quick statement about that succession plan. I think to many people it might, you know, appear to be a, you know, a quick and hasty thing. We've been, I've been on this board for eight plus years now and we've been working on this succession plan all along. This is not something that we take lightly, the students' needs and the success, the success and the momentum that we've established is something we take seriously. And, yeah, I think this is just execution of a plan that we set in motion many, many ago.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments, discussion?
Mr. Mitchell? Thank you very much. I think one of the things that I'm very, want to continue to do and been thinking about this, is continuing to have the consistency that we want for our children, you know, we want that even at a local level when we have a principal that's going to be there for many years. You know, the turnaround on principals is hard for our district, you know, when we get into that position, but when we have a principal that's invested into the community, you know, and the kids know next year they're going to see the same principal again, it means a lot to them, especially with their young minds and the stability that continues to have, they continue to have is very important. And I think that should be also something that we need to look at, at this position. You know, it's one of the few decisions that we get to make as board members for the district. You know, we don't, we, I know the budget and, you know, other things are in our line of voting and approving, but our one employee that we have, which is a superintendent's position, is something that we do as an elected board member, is to make that decision on who we decide that we want to be the superintendent. And when you go through the trainings with the New Mexico School Board Association, you find out what your rights are as a board member and what your ability can be at that level. And, you know, we get elected into these positions to help our students and we don't take that very lightly. And we want individuals that we can say that we grew our own, you know, that's one thing we've continued to push for and we need to continue to do is to grow our own. And I think that's exactly what we've done by continuing to have individuals here even at the, in central office administration, administration. We want to see more of it, I'm not going to deny that. I think we need to continue to improve in that area to grow our own and invest more into the individuals that are living here and that will continue to stay here in Gallup. So with Ms. Hanks, working with her now as over eight years as a board member, I have seen her leadership, I have seen her very, very dedicated dedication to our students by testifying in Santa Fe. She's very passionate about continuing to move our students forward. In many ways, you've seen it, I've seen it. So I'm very thankful that I support this. I also am looking forward to hearing and working with her in the next few years to come.
Thank you. With nothing else being said, you know, I think that Board Member Mortensen and Board Member Benali, you guys have hit everything pretty much on the spot. You know, you look at the data at superintendents within the state and I think data shows that superintendents last three years or less. that superintendents last three years or less in the school districts that they're in. We have been very fortunate that we did make a good decision when we picked Mr. Mike Hyatt, who has been with the school district for nine years. And we always get a lot of compliments from others, boards across the state, saying how we're able to keep our superintendent for the nine years that we've had him. In order to move districts forward, I really believe that superintendents need to stay at a school district for more than that three-year period. It's hard to have superintendents come in and out of the district and change things over and over, and I'm so glad that we had one superintendent here with us for nine years, and our next superintendent, I hope, stays with us a good amount of years in order to get our strategic plans and everything continuing in order and keep at the best interests of our students. Thank you. So with that being said, do we have, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Okay, so next on the new business is B, approval, to execute contract for a successor of a superintendent to replace the current superintendent upon retirement of date certain.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to that, to that end.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mortensen and a second by Mr. Schaaf. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
So moving on to item six now, closing items, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Michael Schaaf, second by Mr. Mortensen. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Ten twenty-three.
Thank you, everybody.